What's happening?
Well, we're going to be checking the results as quickly as we can get them. We are connected with the Surir County Clerk's Office. We also have our text alert system set up to get those results to you as quickly as we can. To this point, the election only ended eight minutes ago. So, we've got to give them time to collect up the data and get all the machines counted up. And Stacia Long over at the County Clerk's Office has told me that she's expecting to have those numbers within a half an hour. So, we should have those relatively quick.
Now, that'll be preliminary numbers or will that be the whole numbers at 7:30? Or is it going to be trickling in 7:45 with the bulk of it?
No, all the numbers have 100% of precincts counted. But what you've got to remember is that there are still some provisionals that will be counted. And a new state law now requires Stacia Long to count any mail-in ballots that would come in after the election ended but must be postmarked by 7 o'clock tonight.
I see.
So, if they're postmarked by 7 o'clock tonight and she receives them before the canvassing Friday, she has to count those. But she told me today that they mailed out about 100 ballots. 66 of them had come in. So, that means about 34 ballots would be out there. So, you can kind of figure the numbers within 34 of that plus however many provisionals she gets today.
Well, that could... Now, when would the final actually official results happen?
The official results will be Friday after the canvassing. And that's every election. You know, we watch these things on election night every election. But they're not official until Friday after the canvassing. So, if it's close tonight, if there's a few close numbers, we may not know the outcome until Friday. But we'll see how the numbers work out tonight out of these 13 candidates and find out how far ahead those six might be or how close they might be.
You know, when I went out to the... I think this is the first time this has happened. When I went out there to Kansas, we have a right here in Kansas, in the state of Kansas, if you're listening somewhere else, you have to show your ID to vote. How crazy is that? A lot of states in this union does not require that. Of course, you're required to... If you want to buy liquor, if you're going down on a plane, I think 16 are passports, 16 or 17 other things that require you to show an ID but not to vote. And I don't know how many states there is, but I think there's quite a few. So, I like that. Show your ID to vote. And so, that's the way it should be. When I went out there, there was some pretty good people coming in and out, pretty good attendance. I think projected tonight to be a little higher outcome, I believe, with all the stuff that's going on from the airport to construction to... We broke the story on Sunday on the school, roads. And so, it is a 13 candidate... You know, where we got 13 candidates, is that right? 13 candidates in this. So, it is highly contested and people want to get this right to ship.
There are a number of candidates. And what you have to remember is, two years ago, there was 12 candidates in the city primary and they had 130 preliminary votes. This year, there was 13 candidates. There were 13 candidates and there were over 400 preliminary votes. Counting the mail-ins that came in already, you're talking about 500.
Wow.
So, you go from 130 to 500. So, it would look like one of two things. Either there's higher interest or more people are taking advantage of voting in advance. We don't know yet. We'll find that out tonight when we find out exactly how many ballots were cast. Two years ago, total number of ballots cast in the primary was 865. So, that's the number you want to remember tonight. 865. We want to see if more than 865 participate in this year's primary city election.
And 500 is already... Close to 500 has already had.
Yeah. So, as long as 365 people showed up at the polls today will at least match last year's vote total.
I know we was kind of speculating that if you go by the 500 versus the 100 and what was it?
130.
130. That if you take that 400 more, it might be 13 or 1400 projected. You know, if you take that, the ratio versus with the preliminary, you know, stuff results versus could be a very... One of the most voted on elections in... I don't know what the record is or what... If you have that information, what most people have ever voted in the city commission?
Well, if you look at what 130 is of 865, it's 15%. So, if you look at this year's and if that stayed 15%, I don't think it will. But if that stayed 15%, we'd be looking at more than 3,000 votes. I'm projecting around 2,000 to 2,200 voters. I'm projecting that. We'll see how close I am here as soon as we get the numbers from the Surir County Clerk's Office. And they're out tallying them right now. 7:14, so they just closed 14 minutes ago. But there's only one question on the ballot and that is the Liberal City Commission candidate. So, it shouldn't take... Stacia Long, she told me today that she should get the totals in relatively quick order.
You know, they do a fantastic job out there. You can't tout them guys and gals out there that run the deal. They run a tight ship out there and they do a really good job. It's a neat deal. You know, once again, also, I'll just run down our sponsors real quick while we're kind of waiting here. Sponsored by tonight's coverage, Ashley Home Store. There's a big, huge tent sale going on through August 14th. Rainbow International Carpet Cleaning, call Wayne Williams, 353-0485. Crisberry's Automotive, 1111 West Trail, 626-4613. 30 years experience, over 30 years experience. Alshank since 1941. Alshank Insurance has been here almost since the Titanic sank. Well, close. But been here a long time, Earl, a long, long time. 24 West Second ASI, 165 years of experience all combined. Also brought to you by Integrity Motorsports. Go see Pablo, 604-5253. He is 1002 North Kansas Avenue. He's got about 25 cars and trucks on the lot. And also, street side barbecue. On the corner of Kansas and Tucker, 11 to 7, Tuesday through Saturday, barbecue chicken, barbecue everything, and the Cheesy Jalapeno Sausage Link. Maybe we should have got some live on air and you can see a sweat, the Cheesy Jalapeno Sausage Link.
Should have had them cater the show.
Yeah.
Rick, gotta work on that. Got to have them cater the show and we can have some of that here. But no, there were a lot of issues this time around that I think we will be paying attention to. We'll see what the voters felt about the issues. And hopefully, we'll get some feedback from some voters as well. If you voted today and you'd like to tell us a little bit about what you thought drove you to the polls, text us, 620-629-3123. We'd love to hear your feedback on it and share that. We won't necessarily share your name unless you want us to. But if you just want us to share a comment, feel free to send it over. If you also felt a certain issue was more important than another, please feel free to send that over. And if you just have a question of us that you'd like us to ask if a candidate comes by or an issue that was facing the candidates this year, please feel free to send that over and ask us as well. We're glad to see what we can do to help answer that. We're looking at 17 minutes now since the polls have closed. And I got my I Voted sticker. Rick mentioned he's got his I Voted sticker. I hope you have your I Voted sticker. The one way that your voice is heard is to actually go and vote. So, we hope that tonight, we see that Earl came out and voted to pick the final six candidates who will go on to the primary election in November when three will be chosen. Now, Rick, one thing we know for sure is we'll have one new commissioner because City Mayor Joe DeNoyer has decided not to run. So, that's one seat for sure that we'll have. So, then you have two incumbents. You have Dean Aragon, who is currently serving a two-year term, and you have Dave Harrison, who's serving a four-year term. And so, those two are looking to seek reelection to their seats. And then you have 11 challengers out there also on those seats. So, it's a large field. Candidates seem to be pretty diversified. And so, it'll be interesting to see where the voters are tonight. Like I say, we want people to participate with this conversation tonight. And you can do that by texting us at 629-3123. You can see that number right down here.
You've got... I'll just go over. We've got two former, Gary Andrews and if you want to go over that real quick, Earl, like I kind of... Ron Warren, Ron Warren, sorry about that, folks. Ron Warren and Gary Andrews, two former city commissioners. So, it's going to be a... If you can run down, I'll throw out a couple, Earl. We've got Connie Seagrist, first, be the first time she had run. And we've got Taylor Harden, is that right? Is that Taylor's last name?
Yep, Taylor Harden.
Any other, Earl? Run that down here. I lost my list here real quick and sorry, folks.
Yeah, I'll go through some that will get everybody the full list. But you've got Dean Aragon, we've mentioned Dean, we've mentioned Dave Harrison, we've mentioned Gary Andrews, Ron Warren, Connie Seagrist, Rick Rose, Dale Harold, Taylor Harden, Jimmy Holman, you've got Andy Stewart, you've got Justin Barnes.
Dale Harold.
Yep, got Dale on the list. You also have... I've got two more on the list. You've got Chris Carlisle and your last one, as our technical crew is helping us out, Travis Combs. So, here's your list of 13. You've got Dean Aragon, you've got Dave Harrison, Gary Andrews, Ron Warren, Connie Seagrist, Rick Rose, Dale Harold, Taylor Harden, Jimmy Holman, Andy Stewart, Justin Barnes, Chris Carlisle, and Travis Combs. Now, who do you think won tonight? Who do you think is going to be the number one vote getter? Text us and tell us who you think is going to be the number one vote getter. We're going to find out here in just a few minutes. We got one person says it's a shame your article in tonight's paper didn't come out yesterday. But that's the way it goes sometimes. We can only go with the information as we get it. And as we get it, we do release it. The article that person may be talking about is, "We had filed a complaint with the Attorney General's Office about an illegal executive section to discuss the selling of property." And we got our letter back from the State Attorney General. And they said that because so much time had passed, that happened in 2014, that they weren't going to pursue a full investigation. But what they did say is that they... I'll read it here. It says, "However, rather than simply close this matter, we have brought this matter to the attention of both the city attorney and the county attorney. We have also strongly urged the city attorney to ensure that the commission identifies and attends training concerning the Kansas Open Meetings Act. Or that she or the county attorney provide the commission with refresher training concerning the Kansas Open Meetings Act requirements during one of the commission meetings." So, that's what we requested anyway. We requested if there's fines that need to be done, make fines, but educate them. Make sure they know and follow the rules. So, we did get what we feel like is justice for the people, that the commission is being asked to be trained on the Kansas Open Meetings Act. So, that is our letter from the Kansas Attorney General's Office. I've already heard one commissioner state that the Attorney General sided with them, that they didn't break the law. Well, that's not what the letter says. It just says that the request was made too late, basically, but that they're still requiring or not requiring, but highly recommending, urging, strongly urging them to be trained and refreshed on the Kansas Open Meetings Act. So, that's from the Kansas Attorney General's Office. And it's in tonight's Leader in Times. If you didn't get a copy, you can get it in any rack location or store location. And you can find it at leaderintimes.com.
You know, the city commissioners are just like the representatives in the Senate and the Congress and the House. They are, they represent the people. They are the checks and balances of things that have gone awry. So, the commissioners, they work for the people of the city. They... So, you've got to protect the interest of the people, just like... So, it's important that if there's things, ask questions. Things are not on the up and up. The taxpayers of this county, of this city are expecting a watch committee or a dog watch. You've got to... So, they are the liaison between everything that's kind of... We've seen lately. And there's good things happening liberal. We've got a lot of building going on. We've got a lot of... You've seen stories in the paper, the New South, Seymour Rogers. I mean, there's no paved roads into the thing except for the one that is next to the little middle school. All kinds of projects going on. There's now Wendy's deal, has kind of raised its ugly head to where there could be some deals with Wendy's and the Ballfield sale and the new Walmart. I mean, there's just, there's a lot, there's so much stuff going on. And they've got to be held accountable for our tax dollars and the sales and the tax dollars increase. And be... So, it's a very important election and a lot of people are expecting some leadership and to be transparent, to do what's in the best interest of the taxpaying citizens of this liberal.
My newest check here doesn't show any results yet, but I have had a couple of texts come through. One person out there says they hope a candidate who is solid in character and values wins. And I think that most of the voters would probably agree with that.
That's a good deal.
It is. And so, we appreciate the feedback and I hope you continue to participate tonight. The number's right down here, 629-3123. Keep the texts coming. We're still watching for the results. We don't have the results quite yet. I'm keeping my eye on every resource that we have that will bring us those results and as quickly as we have them, you have them. Now, I want you to know, when I get the results and we read the results, we'll have to decipher it a little bit because we don't always get it in, say, 1-2-3 order. We just get 13 numbers and names. And then what we have to do is start to go through that and find out which one got the most votes, second votes, and so on. So, when we get the numbers, we will give them to you. But just remember, just give us a little bit as we're deciphering them so that we get them to you in order.
About five minutes away. I'll just go ahead and run down real quick on some sponsors tonight. Street Side Barbecue, corner of Kansas and Tucker, 624-5845, 11-7, Tuesday through Saturday. Your traditional barbecue plus barbecue chicken and cheesy jalapeno sausage link. Integrity Motorsports, 1002 North Kansas Avenue, 604-5253. Pablo's got over 25 cars and trucks. Check them out at integritymotorsports.net. Your one-stop shop, finance available on site. The fine folks at Alshank Insurance, over 76 years, the trusted choice agent, 604-4644. Located just around the corner here from the newspaper at 24 West Second. Alshank.com. Over 165 years of experience combined. Crisberry's Automotive Services, also not too far away from us on 111 West Trail, 626-4613. Ron, Daniel, and Jed, they work on just about anything over there. Also, Wayne Williams, call him at Rainbow International. Any kind of mold, fire, water, tile, duct tape, duct, duct tape, duck cleaning, carpet cleaning, not D-U-C-T, not of course, D-U-C-K. But I'm pretty sure if you had a duck to be cleaned, Wayne would clean that for you too. 353-0485. And also, Ashley Furniture. Go see Kevin, Gabby, and Lamb and Dave Hall. They're having a huge, big tent sale now through August 14th.
Okay, Rick, I got to break in. Got to break in here. We got some results. So, we're going to break in here with the results.
Drum roll, please.
Give you some numbers here. Okay, like I said, I got to decipher these. First of all, I'm going to try to go through these and give them to you in the proper order. Connie Seagrist is going to be your top vote getter tonight. And she received 599 votes. So, Connie Seagrist will be advancing on to the general election. Following through here, it looks like your number two vote getter with 349 votes is going to be Taylor Harden. Taylor Harden will advance with 349 votes. Let's see here. It looks like Ron Warren. Ron Warren, a former commissioner, will advance with 318 votes. Let's see here. Looks like Justin Barnes. Justin Barnes with 299 votes will advance. Let's see here. 265... Oh, 294. Travis Combs with 294, not very far behind, will advance. And it looks like Chris Carlisle with 265. So, is that 6? 1-2-3-4-5-6. That would be 6. I'm going to keep going through here and see if I can decipher these numbers as I go through. After 265, looks like 241 would be Andy Stewart, 241. And 235 is Jimmy Holman at 235. So, then it looks like your next one at 234 was Dave Harrison at 234. Let's see, under 234... 232 was Dean Aragon at 232. I missed one here. Just ahead of him was Gary Andrews at 239. Gary Andrews came in at 239. Dale Harold came in at 234. So, it looks like Dale Harold... I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Dale Harold came in at 197. And it looks like Rick Rose came in at 165. So, let me just decipher to make sure that I'm looking at these right. But Connie Seagrist, your clear winner. She had 16% of the vote, 599 votes. The vote count was higher than last time, but not what I thought it would be. It was 1,353 total voters today, which is still 500 more than two years ago.
That's good.
So, let me just check this again. Connie Seagrist comes in number one. Taylor Harden, 349, number two. After 349, it looks like 318 was Ronnie Warren. And so, the highest, Justin Barnes was number four. Number five after 299...
Combs at 294?
Was Chris Carlisle. I'm sorry, yeah, you're right. Travis Combs at 294. And then it's 265, the highest next one. Yes, it is. Chris Carlisle. So, your advancers. Okay, let's look at how close 6 is to 7 because...
Now, real quick.
I want to see if that's within the margin there that they were talking to me about earlier today.
Will there be any kind of changes through late ballots or anything by the way that you see right now? Is there anything that could be affected?
Well, with Chris Carlisle being your sixth place person at 265, the next person is Andy Stewart at 241. That's a 24 vote deal. And with 30-some votes out there, it's possible but not likely. I think we know these are the six that are advancing on to the general election.
Barring some 30-some votes for one...
Yeah, and that would be very... That would mean none of the advanced voters or provisional ballots, zero of them would go for these other candidates.
Virtually impossible.
It's virtually impossible. But again, these are preliminary numbers. These will be canvassed and be verified Friday. But one thing I know for sure, nobody can catch Connie Seagrist. She is number one by a long shot. I mean, she is 250 votes ahead of the second place, Taylor Harden. And then Ron Warren. If this were the election for the whole thing, if this wouldn't have been a primary, your three new commissioners would be Connie Seagrist, Taylor Harden, and Ron Warren. But Justin Barnes, Travis Combs, and Chris Carlisle still have something to say about that as we head to a general election.
You know, Connie, we had talked about Connie and known her for a long time. She's been here forever. You know, Milton, her had... I know Milton, I know her son Darren, I used to work together, Wentworth. And we had talked about how Connie appealed to, of course, your older vote, but also appealed to younger with her wanting to see a facility, a youth facility or YMCA type of here. And so, and then Taylor, coming in second, a young man. He has a technology for all. He's got a lot of good ideas. And then Travis, kind of interesting here. He's got, he's on the school board too. So, that's kind of a unique deal. You've got Chris Carlisle right there on the heels in sixth. And then Justin Barnes, he's right in the thick of things, only about 20 votes from third place. So, and he's a younger person too. I know Justin. He works at Conestoga out there. And Ron Warren, a past city commissioner. So, very clear message tonight, Earl, of former and those serving, only one, Ron Warren, made the cut. Your thoughts on that?
Well, I'm trying to do the math here real quick and I'll let everyone know beyond the numbers that we've presented so far, the whole rundown.
While you're doing that real quick, let me just... I was talking about Ashley Home Store here liberal. Big tent sale now through August 14th, 529 South Kansas, 624-1066. Tempur-Pedic mattresses starting at $38 a month. Sealy mattresses starting at $399. 0% interest financing. See store for details. Every bed must go. Hours Monday through Friday, 9 to 7, Saturday, 9 to 6. A lot of fine folks that work down there. They are great people. They'll help you out. Also, go get some barbecue. Street Side Barbecue, corner of Kansas and Tucker. Integrity Motorsports for all your vehicle needs. See Pablo. Alshank Insurance, 76 years in business since 1941. Crisberry's Automotive Service, 111 West Trail. Work on basically anything. Rainbow International Carpet Cleaning, call Wayne Williams, 353-0485. And just want to thank these fine sponsors so much. And while Earl is touting, figuring out some percentages and stuff, I want to give you a little teaser. We had a lot of success on our top five or so. We had list of restaurants here in town that used to be here in town. And we had Taco Tico as number one. Now, I wish the good news was that we was going to put in Taco Tico here, but it is not. We... Next week, we're going to do a broadcast and be thinking about this. We're going to go over what used to be in the South Gate Mall at one time. When Earl and I was kids, we'll recall what stores there. And we want your input. So, I'm putting that teaser out there while Earl is putting things together. So, we'll be having that broadcast next week. We hope you interact with us or even text us some things tonight if you remember a store. But we'll get more into that, but it's kind of a teaser right now. So, once again, Surir County City Primary Election Results. You know, once again, Earl, what are your thoughts on that clear message that the voters have sent here?
Okay, well, let me just give the rundown. We know the six that are advanced. We know the six that are advancing. Connie, Taylor, Ron, Justin Barnes, Chris Carlisle, Travis Combs, those, those are advancing. So then seven, right behind that, that just missed. And first of all, I wanna say this, all 13 deserve the community's respect and admiration. Put your name out there on a ballot for other people to decide winners and losers of an election. It's not that these people are winners and losers of people. They all put their name out there, they all told you what they wanted to accomplish. And now you chose the ones that, the direction you wanted to go. So there is no wrong answer, no wrong vote. Everyone gets to vote for how you feel the city should move forward. So first, I wanna say thank you to all 13 candidates. Having said that, the seven that will not make it through, but, but we still owe them the respect of running.
Yes.
Are Andy Stewart, who came in seventh with 241 votes. Gary Andrews, who came in eighth with 239 votes. Jimmy Holman, who came in ninth with 235 votes. Dave Harrison, who came in 10th with 244 votes. Dean Aragon, who came in 11th with 232 votes. Dale Harold, who came in 12th with 197 votes. And Rick Rose, who came in 13th with 165 votes. So that's your 1 through 13 order tonight for the election. And, you know, it, it's gonna be said, it's gonna be talked about at the coffee shops, it's gonna be talked about at the water coolers and everywhere, Rick, is gonna be about the incumbents. Because clearly after tonight's election, we know there will be three new commissioners that will take the seats in January. So the incumbents, Dean Aragon and Dave Harrison did not advance after tonight's results. And this is a spread out field if you look at it. I mean, a lot of the numbers are in the 200 range, 230, 240 range. And, and the incumbents are right there, they're, they're on the lower end of those numbers, but, but not far. I mean, you're talking about from fifth place of 294 to the incumbents 234. You know, so you're looking at 60 votes difference there. So every vote does count. But, Rick, there's, there's gonna be talk about no incumbents advancing.
That's, that is a clear message there. You know, look at that, the possibility of that third, third and four matchup. Right now, we'd have 299 in fourth. And then, you know, only, only 19 votes separate that, who could get in, in the November election. And then the four and five, between Barnes at 299 and Combs at 294. So Combs is only about 22 or 23 votes out of that, that position. So that's within, both well within striking distance. Now, the, the sixth place has got to, Chris Carlisle, has got some makeup there to, to get the third. So, oh boy, here we go.
Well, and we wanna welcome here today our number two vote getter in today's primary election. And we're gonna get him mic'd up here real quick and give him a microphone here. Taylor Harden's joined us here in the office. And so first of all, Taylor, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to the election, 349 votes, the, the second vote getter against what right now seemed like a powerhouse in Connie Seagrist. But tell us a little bit about how you campaigned and what you think was working for you.
You know, I took a much different strategy with campaigning than I think a lot of the other candidates did. You know, ever since I was a kid, I followed politics, and I've always been kinda frustrated that it seems like whoever has the most money just look around, that can buy the most radio advertisements or TV advertisements or Facebook advertisements and yard signs generally buys their way into office. So whenever we were doing the process and getting signed up with the government's ethic commission, I actually made a pledge that we would have a zero-fund campaign. Because if I got on, I wanted it to be because people wanna change and that they believed that I could be a good leader of the community and not because we invested a ton of money into spamming my name into their brains as programs. So, you know, really, I've just been trying to show up to as many community events as possible, and I generally do those anyway. So, you know, besides the, the two candidate forms and the third, that was an unofficial one, I really haven't done a whole lot of door-to-door campaigning or anything like that. I've just been trying to continue, you know, TFA keeps me nice and busy. So I've been trying to keep everything up down there and just make a good impression on people whenever I have the opportunity.
What do you read into the numbers here tonight? You've got six challengers, one former commissioner, Ron Warren, who is gonna be in that field of six, but five newcomers to politics, yourself included. And now we know for sure we'll have three new commissioners. Whatever happens in, in November, we'll have three new commissioners in January. What do you read off of the feeling of the voters in this election?
You know, the, the general feeling I got from talking to everybody was that, you know, this community's ready for change. And not necessarily, you know, everything that's, that's been coming out in a negative light. But, you know, I think even before that, people were deciding that we kinda wanna get to the point where we're envisioning our future and starting to take the steps necessary to get there. And I think by the people that we had, you know, try out to even make this spot, you can see that in a lot of them, that they have a vision of the future. That, you know, not only do they want the best for Liberal, they want the best for every kind of person in Liberal. And so I'm taken to death at the people that made the top six. And I truly appreciate everyone that came out and actually tried to make this because I know that having 13 candidates is a very, and it shows that we have a lot of people around here who care very deeply about our community.
I know one of the things you talked about during the campaign was some technological upgrades to the city. You might tell us a little bit about that, but also what your vision is. What were you sharing with people about where you see Liberal headed?
You know, one of the things that I really tried to hammer in place is that I think we need to start focusing on the city as a whole again. Instead of focusing on certain districts of town to become, you know, the new area where we put all the development in or anything like that. You know, if you look at the, the city of Liberal, the most burden that there is on taxpayers is actually all the middle and lower end of town, which we consider to be the middle and south end of Liberal. And so, you know, I just hope that's, that we can start looking at things that are going to positively affect all of our lives and start trying to kinda put, put things in place where we can all have a community discussion about what do we want Liberal to be 30 years from now. And when it comes to technology, I think that is, in my opinion, of course, because I have a technology store and I've lived technology my whole life. You know, I see technology as being the key. Because, you know, we always talk about Silicon Valley out there and above us. And the thing is, we have much lower cost of living for all our employees, much lower cost of operations for the businesses. And really, we're only a few small steps away from being able to really allure to these businesses and try and get them to bring their industry here. And so I'm truly hoping, was that off the end of the table? This is awesome. Hopefully the voice is loud enough.
Oh, no.
Here, go ahead, go ahead and pick it up. You probably picked it up intermittently over some of that, so we won't start it over. But, Rick had one job.
I turned it on.
There's two ones, two ones.
This was a Forrest Gump moment right here.
Well, just, just tell us a little bit about, again, your vision for the future of Liberal.
I'm sorry.
Oh, that's perfectly fine, that's perfectly fine. First of all, I appreciate you guys having me, and I appreciate all the support you guys put towards all of the candidates throughout this campaign. I think you guys are fantastic public. Going back to my vision of the, of the city, you know, artificial intelligence is accelerating right now at a pace that we could have never expected. And artificial intelligence is the greatest threat that we've ever had to our human workforce in history. And right now, we're currently going through the fourth industrial revolution, and that is automation and artificial intelligence. So my hope is, is that if we can get on the ground running and get the city's infrastructure fixed so that we have affordable, high-speed internet that's always reliable, that that is, to me, one of the biggest missing components of getting some of these industries in because they can't operate a business with no bandwidth. So, you know, there, there's not a lot of things that I think that we desperately have to do to start getting these businesses, other than being open for businesses in the city, having commissioners that are going out of their way to reach out and develop relationships with these types of industries and doing everything they can to get them in here. And then, you know, one thing that I would like to see at Liberal, because I know every big city person that I've talked to looks at Liberal as a town and not a city, because we don't have anything that goes up. And when I look at downtown and how much it struggles because of our lack of parking and, and property tax and things like that, you know, I kinda dream of a future in Liberal where we don't necessarily have to always develop outward, but can repurpose structures and build up, you know, because that is going to always lure more to the big city people than we can mediate the cost of having tons of businesses in one 10-story tower to where they can afford to be in there and afford to drive. So, you know, I think there's a lot of possibilities for the future. The main thing I want, I want 60,000 people in this town by 2040. I don't think it's that difficult to achieve if we set that out as a goal for ourselves and say, hey, we're tired of piddling around and doggy paddling in the water. Let's start being aggressive, and not, not aggressive in the way where we're damaging relationships, aggressive in the way where we're trying as hard as we can as a community, everybody as a whole, to make this city into what we've always wanted it to be.
You know, real quick, I was thinking, when Taylor talked about technology for all, he wants to be a representative for all. And he's talking about politics at a young age. Taylor and I have spent hours down talking about politics, which I love, we throw ideas off of each other, so.
We'll, we'll let those stay off the record tonight. But, no, we appreciate that, and, and Taylor having an ear to the folks and listening to people like Rick and to people like, that you've heard out throughout the community, and I've seen you at the events. And so I wanna say congratulations to you tonight.
Thank you very much.
Enjoy the evening. And, Taylor Harden, second tonight, but advances with the top six with 349 votes. Second only to Connie Seagrist, who was a clear-cut overall winner tonight. Had the election been tonight, Taylor Harden would be a. He's got one more election to make it through with six candidates, so there's still work to be done. So we'll see, Taylor, how that goes for you. We wanna congratulate you and let you get back to enjoying your celebration party tonight.
Thank you very much. And I wanna thank everyone in the community that took time out of their day to go vote for all the candidates. And I'm very humbled, so thank you very much for the opportunity to continue on, and thank you.
Thank you, congratulations, and we'll be catching up with you. But we have a few more candidates here tonight, and so we wanna bring in, bring in the next one. And.
Chris, are you up there?
Whoever walks in the door is fine, doesn't matter which one. Somebody wants to come on in? Come on in, Ron.
Congratulations, Ron.
Ron.
Now the mic's on.
Now, the mic is live. So the good thing is you're second, 'cause if, 'cause half of Taylor's was not mic, we had to get the mics set right. So, Ron, you came in third tonight, 318 votes. Taylor had 349 right ahead of you, and Justin Barnes is right behind you at 299. So it's a tight pack right in there for that third spot to serve on the commission. Still a long election to go, there's one more election to go. So how do you feel about tonight's results?
Well, I'm pleased with the results. And I, like I said, we talked about it, you know, the, the public wants some change. I think that showed in tonight's results. And we got a, a lot of candidates that come out, and I'd like to thank the ones that didn't make it and some of the first-time people that ran. You know, don't, don't give up. If you wanna do public service, it's hard to get to some of these sometimes. And, you know, do it, you know, do it again, stay involved. And thanks for, for trying this. And like I say, I, I'd love to see you come do it in the next election.
Ron, your name had come up. You've been commissioner before. There were some issues before. You've, you've, I guess in a way, have challenged some things at City Hall. And, and you've, you've sought to get back into the commission. So what was driving you a little bit, and what do you wanna see accomplished as, if, if you can see this through and get back on the commission?
Well, you know, I've done this several times, and it's never been more clear to me than it is this time. I wanna represent the public, I wanna get the public involved in the decisions, especially the ones in sales tax, how we spend that money. And, you know, the public has the right to decide how that's spent. It's their money. All the tax money is their money. They have the right really to influence how all the money is spent. And I just felt like, you know, sitting back and watching this time, that we kinda got away from that, that the public had no input in, in city government. And that's my goal if elected in November, is, is to represent the people and find out what the people want. And do everything I can to, you know, put boards back in place that used to help us with those decisions. And I think I said it the other day, the more people involved in a decision, the better the decision is gonna be.
Well, tonight has been a change election, if you wanna call it that, because you have, well, of the six, five have never served, and you're the only one of any candidate tonight that has previous commission experience that made it through this cut. So what do you think separated you from being considered one of, I guess you'd say, one of them?
Well, I, I think maybe the only difference is the experience. I, I think change does take some knowledge, and that's what I've tried to convey. I'm, I'm really excited for Connie and Taylor. I really, I mean, how about Connie's numbers? Those are crazy, aren't they? That's just great. I actually called that, I don't know if I called it for you, but I, I've said the whole time she's gonna be top vote getter, deservingly so. She cares about this community. And I think, you know, that's what people want. They want somebody up there making decisions that care what happens in our community. And I, I think that, you know, this is, is gonna be fun. But I think the difference for me was maybe the ability to step in and help with the change. I know the things that we're gonna have to do to make it.
Well, we wanna congratulate you tonight. A big night, a change election, six new faces will battle it out for three spots in November. You guys, I heard maybe that there's some camaraderie between everybody on the challenger side. How do you feel about the field?
The field that's left? You know, I, I'm comfortable with it. I, only one person left that I haven't really talked to a little bit, and I'd like to talk to him and, and, you know, kinda see her thoughts. And I am excited, like you said. Everybody but me hasn't done it yet, so this is great. I always feel like, you know, I, I know I learned myself a lot from public service in, in getting to do this, and it's gonna be great to see at least two other people, possibly three, you know, get to fill it for the first time. I hope there's only two, but, but I think that's great that they're gonna get the opportunity. And I, I'm looking forward to.
You know, real, real quick, Ron hit on a key word there, working together. Even if the opponents, you know, you're kinda combating each other, all of the candidates, and utmost, utmost respect to them for putting their name out there. Ron had said that it's not easy. I, I auditioned in front of a comedy deal in Silver Dollar City, and it's, it's hard to get out there in front and speak, and I mean, it can get to you. So hats off to them, but, but that key word, working together for the community of Liberal. And that's what even the ones that finished in seventh, eighth, ninth in the lower places and have the input and stuff together. So working together is the only way to get things done, not only local, state, but national of working together.
Well, Ron, we wanna congratulate you tonight. Enjoy this, and the race starts anew tomorrow for the general. And the voters will still be looking for information from you and your, now your, your five competitors. So we'll, we'll be following the, the trail as we've been doing and keeping the, the public informed on what comes up next. But we do wanna say congratulations tonight. Enjoy this evening and look forward to seeing how the race moves forward.
I, I appreciate it, and I, I think, like I said, I think the community won tonight, and I'm excited about it.
Well, congratulations, Ron. We'll let you enjoy the rest of your evening. Thanks for stopping by. And, Ron?
Is this karaoke night?
And we've got another candidate coming in here, and we'll see who our, our next one is that comes through. Chris? Yep, sure, come on in. Come on in, Chris.
You're the next contestant, Chris. Congratulations, congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
Here you go, ma'am.
And you wanna hold that so the people can hear you. Chris, we wanna congratulate you tonight. You're in the top six. You know, this election isn't about winning 1, 2, 3. First, you just gotta be in 4, 5, 6, and then see where it goes from there. You were above the line, so, so you survive the, the, the first cut. How do you feel about it tonight?
I am excited to be in the top six. I'm excited for the candidates that are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. So now it's a lot of work to get to 1, 2, 3, so. two, three, four, five, so now it's a lot of work to get to one, two, three, so.
You've been, you've been campaigning, you've, you've been talking about change in Liberal, what do you think worked for you, what do you think was the message that you were sharing that resonated with the, uh, the voters tonight?
Well, you know, you knew direction, new leadership, um, hopefully we can work on the south end of town, um, instead of just the north end of town, um, we just need to focus on getting customer service, communication with the city, uh, that's a big, big part, uh, people agree with that, so hopefully that we can, and get industries in here as far as, you know, hopefully to support the new businesses and the, the old businesses, so that's what I'm hoping that we can get in here.
When you look at how the votes come out tonight, obviously there's going to be three brand new commissioners come January, what do you think was resonating with the voters, what, what do you thought, think that the outcome of this election tells, uh, either the current commission or the future commission, what do you think was the clear message by the voters tonight?
They want change, definitely want change, um, with the FAA, that we had the deal with the ball fields, uh, sold to, to Walmart, to, um, just not being honest and, right, with everybody, just honesty is what, that's, I think that's what citizens want, is honesty, communication, and I hope that I can bring that to, to the citizens, I want to be their voice and I hope that they'll like me in November.
Now, Chris, you were in that, uh, that, kind of they call it the vulnerable six, so, uh, where do you, what, what do you think, what will you be working on for the next, uh, two months to try to get that from six to three, two, one?
Well, I'm going to go knock on doors, hopefully it'll be cooler, uh, wanted to do it, but it was just so hot, so I will continue, uh, being at my restaurants and talking with the people, um, I think that helped a lot and, uh, living here all my life, but yeah, definitely, uh, out knocking on doors and hopefully getting the top three.
So moving forward, you know, we've asked some of the others here tonight, what do you think is your vision that, that people, uh, are buying into for, not just where Liberal's been, but where Liberal's going, what do you see as moving Liberal forward, where, where do you want to take us?
Where do I want to take us? Gosh, I want to be better than Dodge and Liberal, I mean Dodge and Garden, um, I'm hoping we can get people to shop in Liberal, I want to shop in Liberal, I want people to eat in Liberal, I want people to sleep in Liberal, so that way it brings more tax money and everybody can flourish from it.
Well, clearly the voters, uh, were responding to you tonight, uh, that top six, uh, that's goal number one, be in the top six, and then now the next goal will be in, be in the top three, so you made that, Rick, do you have a?
Yeah, I got, Chris is within striking distance, uh, 53 separate votes to separate, uh, her from third place, only 29 from fifth and, and 34 for fourth, so, uh, it's, it's very, it's very doable and Chris has got, he's got a great message and as part of that deal, what Ron talked about of working together, even in the lower half of the seven through 13 that didn't make it, I had kind of unprecedented that, uh, Earl had said that you guys was gathered, I take it over at, uh, your fine establishment and, um, and that, that is neat, that is kind of, uh, different to get together, I think, and I, and congratulations to you, Chris.
Oh, yes, thank you, yes, we have, uh, most of the candidates over there and we're supporting each other and, you know, whoever made it, we were going to back them up 100% and so hopefully that's, that's what everybody does, so that hopefully will get me to third place.
There you go, you've got a plan and, uh, so we'll just review this real quick, Connie was number one at 599, Taylor 349, number two, Ron Warren, three at 318, Justin Barnes was fourth, uh, with 299, Travis Combs at 294 was fifth and then Chris Carlisle with 265, uh, our final qualifier, but now it's his new race, it's over tomorrow, these six will start with a clean slate and they'll go at it and see what they can do, uh, to move forward, it sounds like that it's going to be somewhat of a friendly race at this point, there's a lot of camaraderie, I believe that I've heard between, uh, these candidates and so, uh, Chris, we want to congratulate you tonight and look forward to the race as it moves forward and, uh, as, as you work to get into that next, uh, tier, but tonight is a night to celebrate and congratulations on that and, uh, look forward to watching the rest of the race.
Thank you both, I really appreciate it, I want to thank all the voters for getting out and voting today, uh, or, you know, just anybody just making your voice heard, so thank you very much.
And the vote total, just like Chris mentioned, 865 last time, 1353 this time, so almost 500 more voters just in two years, so you guys have done something to motivate the voters as a, as a whole group and so congratulations for that.
People are upset, people are, they want action, they want change done and I, well, I can't, I mean, I shouldn't mention, but Chris knows the perfect place where you can celebrate and they're going to celebrate.
She has a couple, she'd probably celebrate for supper and celebrate for breakfast.
There you go.
And she'll be celebrating, uh, for, for a while and she deserved it.
Yes.
So congratulations, Chris, and, uh, we'll look forward to the rest of the race.
Okay, thank you guys so much.
Congratulations, Chris, good job, good job.
Good job.
Thank you.
There comes another white lady.
And the lady of the hour, the lady of the hour makes her way in here, um, we're going to visit with, uh, looks like we've got Connie, uh, coming in and, uh, we'll, uh, get, get her all set up and get her a microphone and, and going and, uh.
Connie will be a landslide.
If there's such a thing in an election of 13 that you can call it that, it's this one, because, uh, she certainly got, uh, a, a, a clear cut victory tonight for, uh, Connie, she, she got 599 votes, uh, clearly, uh, the top vote getter, 16% of the overall votes, just so you know how much of a victory that is, uh, Taylor came in second, he had 9.5%, and, uh, Connie got 16.3%, so, you know, if you look at point, percentage point differential, that's a seven point win and, uh, in a presidential election, they would consider 5% win, uh, a landslide, so this is a great victory tonight, Connie and, uh...
Close to double, congratulations, Connie, here you go.
And so, so Connie?
Thank you very much.
Top vote getter, what do you think was working, what do you think resonated with the voters with your message?
Well, I think I was honest and I think I told people what I cared about in the city, what I, my vision was for things that I wanted the city corrected or accomplished.
And, and Connie, uh, when you, when you look at this field of, of, uh, six, uh, six of you that will advance to the general election, you're definitely, uh, I guess you'd say the target might be on your back because you're number one now and people are going to want to be like Connie Seagrist, but what, uh, uh, what do you feel about, uh, the message tonight with, um, five people who've never served advancing, one person who's been the commissioner before but not currently and, and no incumbent making it through, I mean, how do you read the electorate tonight?
I think that spells change, that the people who went to all the effort to get out in this hot weather, humid weather, vote, I think they're saying, we want change, we want something different for us.
And obviously your message was the one that resonated, resonated the most with that, uh, change and you, you've, you've talked, uh, in the campaign about some vision for the future, you talked about a rec center, you've talked about making sure the senior citizen center is, uh, is, uh, well taken care of, what do you think, uh, is the message about the future, where, where do you want to see Liberal move forward?
I want us to be sure that our one cent sales tax dollars go the correct place, I've served on the Focus on the Future Committee, I understand the master plan for the Focus on the Future and if I am elected commissioner, I will be a watchdog for this one cent sales tax and it will be spent to the best of my ability for things that our citizens really want, that the citizens have spoken for.
I'm going to answer a couple of things real quick, Connie, before I move on, uh, one question was asked about Chris Carlisle who's on just before you, was her husband on the board in 2014, the answer is no, uh, Jack Carlisle was elected in 2015, uh, so he was not on the board in 2014 and, uh, also we've been asked to plug thebonusproject.com, I'm not sure what thebonusproject.com, so I'm not endorsing it, I don't know what it is, but it says our team, our team hopes to bring real change to our community, but we need your help and support, you can find them at thebonusproject.com, so might be something for people to look at, I don't know, I'm just reading a text, I have no idea what that is, I'm just sharing some of the feedback that we're getting here tonight, um, and, uh, uh, sorry to interrupt that, Connie, I just want to try to keep up with these posts as they're coming across, uh, so with your vision for the future and, and you've kind of covered both sides, you've talked about, uh, things you want to see for young, you've talked about things you want to see for our seniors, uh, you've talked about some of the business changes, uh, you also talked about the Kansas Open Meetings Act, uh, during the campaign and, and your understanding of that, do you feel like any of these issues played into tonight's, uh, results?
Well, I, I hope the fact that I understand the Kansas Open Meetings Act, I've been on a number of boards and we had to follow those rules specifically and it's a mystery to me why our city commission did not have to follow those rules.
Now, you're, you're in a field with six and I think that, uh, from what I've heard, that there's some camaraderie among the, the candidates, um, in this election and, uh, but now you got to run somewhat against each other, um, what do you think it's going to take, uh, to, to stay in that number one position two months from now when the, when the general election takes place?
I have to make sure I get my message out there, uh, whatever it takes to, uh, relate to the people, to the voters, because if I get elected, they are my boss and I want to know what they want me to do, so I will be out there listening a lot.
Obviously you've been doing that, the candidates have, uh, all shared, uh, even, even some of your competitors here tonight have said that you deserve that number one spot, so it seemed like there's some respect among even your, your other candidates, uh, here tonight, so, uh, you, you've certainly earned the respect of the field, uh, and, and moving forward, it sounds like that you have a plan, um. With the message that you've had that resonated so well and, and the relationships you've had, the number of boards that you've served on, the experience you have, how do you think that's going to benefit you, should this be the result in November?
I know how to ask questions when I was come before a board, I, I understand how a board operates and I understand how things need to be transparent to all people sitting on a board and that would be something that I would really watch for as I serve.
Well, Connie, we want to be some of the first, we're not the first, but we want to be some of the first and congratulate you tonight, uh, it's been, uh, quite a race, uh, you, you put your name in the hat, that's always a risk, you don't know, um, you know, what may happen in the election, to have people, uh, put your fate in their hands tonight, they have, uh, they have rewarded you with the first place finish in the Liberal City Commission race, it's been a hotly contested race, it's been, um, a, uh, I think in recent memory, one of the, uh, the, the most contentious, uh, races with 13 candidates and a variety of views and, uh, you've, you rose to the top, so we want to say congratulations tonight and, uh, Rick, you want to add to that?
You know, and fiery issues at that, I mean, with all the, we need a giant fire extinguisher, there's so many fires that's going on and, and, and Connie, I always like to have a little, uh, input here on, on a little deal, 250 votes, that's what Connie separates first and second place and Connie talked about being a watchdog, I believe if she was kind of a watchdog, she would be, would be a bulldog, so, that, uh, congratulations, Connie and, uh, not, not just congratulations and, and once again, I just love hearing the camaraderie and they want the best for the city Liberal, all of the 13 candidates want what's best for the voters and the taxpayers of this city.
Connie's so hot tonight, she's, she's even wearing red, she's, she burned it up at the polls today, uh, clear cut winner and, uh, Connie, we thank you for stopping by with us tonight and talking to the voters and letting them know, uh, how your thoughts on the, and your, your, uh, reaction and...
This is like a Reagan Carter slot, you know, Reagan, Reagan Mondale.
Yeah, if it was electoral, if it was electoral votes, it'd be, it'd be a complete, uh, landslide, but, uh, but I know Connie and I know these candidates and I know they're going to, all six are going to come out and share their message moving forward and, and, uh, and battle it out, maybe not with the contentiousness of the primary, but battle it out into the general here, uh, for those, uh, three seats, uh, it, uh, Connie will be, um, uh, the target because she's number one, but she's also, uh, someone who the voters tonight said, if, if the election were tonight, we want Connie Seagrist to be our next, uh, commissioner, so Connie, congratulations.
Thank you, thank you very much, I thank everyone who got out and voted, whether you voted for me or someone else, it's just the fact that we had a good turnout of voters and I'm proud of that, so thank you.
And we thank you, Connie, you, you helped drive that and so we'll let you get back to your celebration, you've earned it and, uh, Connie, thanks for coming in and congratulations.
Thank you so much.
And, uh, that's Connie Seagrist, everybody, she, uh, came in first place tonight and, uh...
599.
599, I'm sure she's wondering where that 600th vote was, she probably wanted that one more, uh, to get 600, but...
Connie, Connie was so humble that she voted, uh, she didn't vote for herself, so...
Well, and I want you to think about this, there was 1,353 voters and almost half of them, almost 50% in a field of 13...
Would have had to.
Put Connie's name on their ballot, so that right there is also a testament for how strong of a candidate, uh, Connie Seagrist was in this, uh, this year's, uh, Liberal City Commission primary and so I'm not sure if we have any other, uh, um, candidates tonight, but that is the four, uh, four of the top six and, uh, so that's our, our, uh, our responses tonight and we're going to be following up with, uh, stories and interviews at 8:00 PM tomorrow, so you want to follow all this, we'll have it all printed out for you, we'll have it, uh, with, with more comments from the candidates, from the six candidates who, uh, advanced through and, uh, we'll have all the totals, tallies, numbers, everything that you're going to want to know about this election and the later in times tomorrow, so you don't want to miss that. Uh, Rick, final thoughts on how you think it went tonight?
Final thoughts, a clear message tonight with the, uh, with no former or no present serving commissioners going through except for Ron Warren, uh, so a clear message and change and, uh, get out and vote in November, voting i- is so important and so a right that is, uh, like no other, uh, you know, try this in North Korea or Iran or Cuba and don't take it for granted, don't take the freedoms and the, the right to vote and the, the, the way of American life, uh, don't, don't take it for granted, because if you think it's bad, if, if people maybe think things are bad, there's a lot places, a lot worse, uh, you know, Earl, I'm going to end with, uh, just going through our sponsors, we want to thank them tonight for being part of the broadcast, Ashley Home Stores got a big tent sale going on now through August 14th, 529 South Kansas, 624-1066 is the number, Tempur-Pedic mattresses starting at $38 a month, ceiling mattress sets starting at $399, 0% interest financing, see store for details, Every Bed Mess Go Monday through Friday 9 to 7 and Saturday from 9 to 6, I'm getting, so I'm getting better as I go on here, uh, Rainbow International for carpet cleaning, fire, water, damage, uh, carpet cleaning, all your restoration needs, call Wayne Williams, 353-620-350485, uh, also you need any automotive repair work, go see Chris, Chris and Barry's, Ron Chris and Barry, Daniel and Jed, 111 West Trail, 6264613, they work on almost everything, Chris and Barry Automotive Services, in business for 30 years, Alshank Insurance in business for 76 years since 1941, 24 West Second, alshank.com, all his agents together with him, 165 years of experience, Earl, uh, a great, great place, uh, and, and a pillar of this community for a long time, ASI, also Integrity Motorsports, integritymotorsports.net, go see Pablo, he's got over 25 cars and trucks, 604-5253, there is financing available on site and if he doesn't have it on the lot, Pablo will look and has got, uh, he can go get it for you. Also, last but not least, Street Side Barbecue, it's a corner of Kansas Tucker, quarter, uh, the corner of Kansas and Tucker, 11 to 7, Tuesday through, 622-624-5845, along with all your favorites from briskets to pulley sausage to ribs, they've got barbecue chicken... chicken, and the new item, cheesy jalapeno sausage links. So thank you to all our fine sponsors. Thank you for everybody for tuning in tonight. Thank you for all 13 candidates. Thank you for the, you know, voters and get out there and vote in November. Get registered. Make a difference. Your vote does count.
And I'd just like to say, thank you to these sponsors. We can't bring this kind of coverage without the sponsors. That's what allows us to inform you and bring that. So these sponsors here tonight, please try to support the local businesses. We believe 100% in supporting local. These candidates are running. We exist here. The businesses around this town are here to support and provide you with products and services. We ask you to support them. I'm gonna give, I gotta answer a couple of questions here for people, and then we'll do one last rundown, Rick, and then we'll close it down tonight. But I've been asked, can a husband and wife both serve on the city commission? The answer is yes, they can. There is no law that prevents that. It's up to the voters to decide. And this wasn't anything that was secretive. Everybody knew that Chris Carlisle was Jack Carlisle's wife, and she ran, and the voters tonight put her in the top six. So she can run on her own merit, and I can tell you, her campaign, she did. She ran on her own two feet, and the voters, I think, rewarded her with a top-six finish tonight. But the answer is legally, there's nothing wrong with that. A couple on here I can't say publicly, but I will respond to them afterward, and some remarks to the results.
Real quick, girl, I noticed something from Dean Aragon on Facebook. "Thank you for all the support. We lost, but that's why we live in a great country. The voters make their voices heard. God bless Liberal, Kansas. I'm hoping for the best in the future." And that is from Dean Aragon on a Facebook post, so, on a Facebook post. So thank you, Dean, for your service, and thank you for, you know, just thank you.
And I'm gonna give the final rundown of the six, and we'll have our Buddy, our technician tonight. We want to thank Buddy for running the computer tonight. He's keeping everybody, the screens moving for you, and I'm gonna have him, if he would, as we go through these, put these top six that advance on to the general election, starting with number one. And we talked with her just a little bit ago, Connie Seigrist, who finished with 599 votes tonight, clear winner, no question, number one in tonight's primary Liberal City Commission race. Number two, Taylor Harden. Taylor came in with 349 votes, Rick, which is still a very strong second-place finish when you look at the numbers. A distance from number one, but Connie was just such a strong candidate, clearly.
A younger guy, and hadn't seen any signs. I mean, that's a, that is a, I would be as happy as a person could be there if...
Isn't that unique, though? The number-one vote getter, probably, I would say, one of the most experienced local folks.
You're right.
And number two, perhaps one of the freshest faces out there. And that's what the voters went one, two. I mean, just think about that.
It could be a great combination. I mean, that could be. I mean, I think it has a potential of a billion.
Now, look at number three. Number three is some experience of the commission, Ron Warren, right now, setting with 318 votes. I mean, that's clearly got him into the third-place position. So Ron Warren comes in third tonight, former commissioner, and he's come with a message this time around that the voters rewarded with a third-place finish. Fourth place, just out of the top three by, what is it, Rick, 19 votes?
Yep.
Justin Barnes is number four. He advances, and he's another young, say newcomer to politics in a way, that's thrown his hat in the ring.
And just separating 24 from fifth place, Travis Combs. Gentleman is on the school board, so I don't know...
But again, the voters were aware of that. They knew that Travis was a school board, and yet they reward him with a fifth-place finish in the primary. So Travis Combs, number five in tonight's primary, where the six advanced. Travis is one of those six. He makes it into the round of the final round.
And real quick, girl, just that three, four, and five, only 30 votes.
Right.
I mean, less than 30 votes separates, I mean, that third jockeying position, if the numbers kind of go tonight, let's say the first would be Connie, of course, and Tyler, a clear second, and then, but that third position is, that jockeying there is less than 30 votes.
And we've seen in some recent elections where I think even Dean Aragon finished sixth one time and finished third. So it is not unheard of that you can make up that ground. And I'm sure Chris Carlisle likes hearing that, because tonight, she's in the top six at number six, but all bets are off, everything starts over. And you gotta think about the people who voted tonight for the seven that didn't make it. Where do Andy Stewart's voters go? Where do Jimmy Holman's voters go? Del Harold, Rick Rose, Dean Aragon, Dave Harrison, Gary Andrews. Where do their voters go now? Where do these people, when they have these six, you know, where are those votes gonna go? And how can that make a difference in the final outcome? You know, you get to vote for three. So it's still anybody's game heading into the general election, and that, the pecking order of the one through six is interesting for tonight, but tomorrow, they're gonna start, and it's zero across the board, and it's basically start over and go out and try to see what you can do over the next two months.
Six and third, little over 50 votes. So that's, you know, like I said, that, for that third slot, all in three, four, five, and six are right there. Now, the two, top two vote getters, you know, can't sit back on their laurels and just, they gotta keep up the pressure. But that's gonna be, I think it's gonna be a highly contested, you can tell by the votes to separate third, fourth, fifth, and just 50, little over 50 on sixth place. And also, a clear message tonight, the big message tonight is new leadership.
New leadership is coming. There's no way around it now, because a majority of your board now, three new seats will join Tony Martinez and Jack Carlisle in January. And so three new faces guaranteed, a majority of the new city commission 2018 will be just sworn in.
And the possibilities of five that's buying, that has never served before, and one that is a former commissioner. So we could have truly, if the four, five, and six position persons in that get up in there, truly a never-before-served, with even Jack had never served before, Tony had never served before. So a whole fresh of brand-new faces with no incumbent or nobody that ever had experience before has ran, exception of if Ron can get in there and keep that third hold, or maybe move up into second and first in your right. Where are all the other votes gonna go to?
So clearly, Liberal's future is gonna take a turn. There's no question about it. We'll see what that means as the election moves through. I do want to thank a few people tonight. Want to thank all the sponsors who made tonight's broadcast possible. Rick, want to thank you for coming in tonight and helping out. Buddy on the control panel, and Robert is out here running our green room, bringing the candidates in and getting that all lined out. And so we will thank Robert for his help tonight as well. So we're in tonight's broadcast with, the results now are out there. You know who your top six are, but remember, this is just selecting six. Please continue to pay attention, learn from these candidates. Listen, watch, read what is left to come over the next two months, and then cast another vote in November for who you believe is the right person to guide Liberal for the next two to four years. For the Leader in Times, this is Earl Watt, speaking for Buddy Buchanan, Rick Yurik, and Robert Pierce, saying thank you for watching tonight. Good evening, and God bless.